See, I wanted to take this session because there is so much of information floating around this war. So, I want to give you perspective, why this war is happening in the first place? Why it is happening now and who is the mastermind behind? These are the few questions I want you to know the answer. Okay, can anybody tell me, why is the war happening? My question is why? What happening in Nargal? What happening, I know, but my question is, see, few things understand clearly. There are terrorist training camps in Pakistan. Pakistan is funding them, Pakistan is training them, Pakistan is giving them ideological training, everything is happening. I strike the training camps. First of all, he sends terrorists to India and purely on religious lines, few people were killed. See, historically, we were aware that the present form of terrorism that the world is witnessing, it is religiously induced terrorism. One particular community feels that I need to either take revenge or kill everybody who is belonging to or practicing some other community. Now, is this the real message of the religion? The answer is a straight jacket, no. But what these people do is, for with political ideologies, they brainwash the youth and they send them into the battlefield. Listen to this carefully. Assalu, this word terrorism, ekka nunchchindi? This terrorism one a word, is it new to twentieth century or twenty first century? No, it is a very old word where earlier it was political terrorism. What Hitler did is also kind of political terrorism. But what we are seeing now is primarily religious induced terrorism. So, one particular religion targeting some other religion. In the second week of April, just three days before the twenty second April Pahalgam attack, the army chief of Pakistan, Asif Munir, General Asif Munir, while addressing few selective audience, he made a statement that Muslims and Hindus cannot stay together. Right? No, you need to understand this statement as an aspirant of UPSC. From my side, the attack did not happen on twenty second April, the attack happened on the day he made this statement. And somewhere, uh, I am not here to point a finger at the army, air force or the navy. Somewhere, we failed to read this statement. And this statement was a declaration of war by Pakistan. Why? Because we know that the terrorist attacked us in a place called Pahalgam. Listen to this statement carefully what I am making. When Asif Munir made a statement that we cannot live together, Muslims and Hindus cannot live together, he knew what is going to happen in Pahalgam after three days. Because Pahalgam is not very close to LOC. It is very interior to the LOC. It means the terrorist, the terrorist who were sent for this task of Pahalgam were very much present in Pahalgam when this statement was made. It means in the class of internal security to few of you, I would have taught about sleeper cells, I would have taught about overground workers and all. It means the terrorist, six of them who participated, how many came, we don't know, but the six of them participated in this brutal act of Pahalgam, they were very much probably present in Pahalgam when he was speaking three days before. So, it means it was kind of a green signal to them, now the time has come to attack India. Now, listen to this statement. I am a firm believer, I am a firm believer that without a local support, terrorism cannot happen. After having served in J and K for good about three, three and half years, I can emphatically make this statement, if local support is denied, terrorist cannot survive. If I tell you, go to Bangalore, if I tell you, go to Bangalore, go to this address. You cannot use Google, you cannot ask anybody the address, but you have to reach the address. Can you go? Can you go? You cannot. If you have to go, you need some localite who would guide you where to take the bus or train, which station to get down, what is the correct mode of transportation from there to that place or not. So, the way you cannot reach what you call Bangalore all by yourself, the terrorist also cannot reach this place without the support of a local guide. It means the localites who are there in the Jammu and Kashmir are still supporting the terrorism. I am not saying hundred percent, they don't need also hundred percent, they need two, three percent people to support. Unse kam nikal jay. Because, understand this, without local support, you entering my country, staying in my country is almost impossible. And very, very importantly, you need to understand, these terrorists who have come, they are Pakistanis and their language and our language in J and K is different. So, if they come all alone without seeking any support, they have to stop somewhere for rest, they have to stop somewhere to eat. So, definitely, their whereabouts would be opened to everybody. So, what happens is, right from the LOC, somebody guides them to the place of stoppage or to the place where they are supposed to carry out an attack. Now, listen to this statement again carefully. Even today, we do not know where are these six bastards. Yes, sir? It means they are still getting that local support which should not have been given to them. Understand? So, this is how the enemy has used the Pakistan occupied Kashmir territory and also few sympathizers, also few sympathizers who are giving them shelter, who are giving them logistical support. Telugu lokasamathundi, intlo dungani shivur guda patukova leedu anisi. You will find, sitting in between us, there will be a bastard who leak the information of us to the enemy. So, as a bureaucrat, you should all be aware and awaken to identify who is that person. Always remember, that is why it is said that an external enemy carries out less damage to us than internal enemy carries out more damage to us. Ni toni kalshuntadu, ni toni navutuntadu, mi vana ke neegurunchi tapugmatkata. That is human nature, that is human nature. So, we have a responsibility to identify who are these sympathizers. Now, listen to this. Why they chose Pahalgam? Now, the question is, why Pahalgam and not any other place? Why Pahalgam, why they want to attack Pahalgam only? Because I have served there, I can tell you with confidence, Pahalgam comes under Anantnag district. Comes under Anantnag district and it happens to be a mega tourist spot. It happens to be a mega tourist spot. See the, see the purpose of the enemy, how deep rooted he is to harm you. How deeply he has made up his mind to harm you is very clear with this. The enemy says, we have removed article thirty five A along with three seventy. When we aggregated article three seventy, we removed article thirty five A also. What thirty five A told before is outsider, it means anybody who is not a domicile of J and K, outsider cannot own property in J and K. So, when I remove this article, now an outsider can purchase property in J and K. So, what will happen? To make you understand, Abhani may buy a piece of land there and create a resort there. Create a resort there so that tourist will come, stay, use the resort, go around, enjoy and go back to his country or to the state if it is an Indian tourist. Now, the terrorist organizations and the Pakistan understood that if tourism flourishes like this, what flourishes? If tourism flourishes like this over a period of time, all the youth of J and K will have employment to do. And if you get employment to do, minimum to minimum, when you go back home, you will take fifteen hundred to two thousand rupees in the evening in the backdrop of increasing tourism. Now, see the thought of this, thought of the terrorist organization or the Pakistan army. What they feel is, if a youth gets money from employment, if I make a call, I will give you five hundred rupees, come for stone pilting, will he come? No. So, now the target of the terrorists and the Pakistan army is to ensure that this does not happen. So that the youth remains unemployed so that he can come and fight for me whenever I direct him to fight. So, this is where he does not want tourism to flourish in this sector, in this particular territory. Now, imagine a situation, in this situation, will anybody go to J and K? If you tell your parents, Amma, I want to go lay bike ride. Chupu isko nai bike ride hoteli, yes or no? So, you are only thinking from individual perspective, like you, nobody is going. It means for next six months, for next six months, there is no scope of employment in J and K. Now, babo papi pet ka sawal hai, I am hungry, I am hungry, I don't have because government is busy fighting the war. I don't have employment, I am hungry. When the stomach is hungry, ethics, ethos have no values. Because your stomach is hungry, now at this point of time, he will tell, take this weapon, what this country has given you, nothing but pain and empty stomach. So, what will happen? To ideologically brainwash you became easy for the terrorists. So, he will tell, I will give you five hundred rupees per day, go and do this. If you are ready to become a Fidaian attacker, your family will get fifty lakh rupees. For any youth, if he feels one sacrifice of mine, if it can fetch fifty lakh rupees for my family, should I not go for it? So, this is how they develop this belt of Fidaians within the country also. So, this is the mastermind of Pakistan. Now, coming back to the core question, why Pahalgam we have understood, why attack India? Why attack India now, at least now, after Pahalgam? Anybody? Why attack India now, after Pahalgam? Anyone? You can draw some reference from Afghanistan, I have given you a big hint. Now, listen to this. As per a report, though it is not very, very confirmative, the figures may vary a little. As per a figure, there are around thirty thousand terrorists. There are thirty thousand terrorists who are trained, who are equipped, who have been indoctrinated, who have been indoctrinated by the Pakistan army are there in Pakistan. It could be in P O K or it could be mainland of Pakistan also. Now, listen to this, listen to this angle closely. On your telling, he carried out Pahalgam. On whose telling? Maybe the Pakistan army also has the blessing of the political class, okay? On your telling, I carried out Pahalgam. And how did the Indian army retaliate? Indian army, how it retaliated? It, what it did, it strike that, strike that, the terror camps, it strike that, the terror headquarters. Now, listen to this carefully. It means initiation army, training, attack, retaliation. Now, if he does not fulfill a particular role of conveying a message to him that I am with you, I am for you, I am because of you. Ani, okka message terrorist ki evaka pothe, there is a high chance it thirty thousand will wage a war against ya. It means a monster whom you created, a monster whom you created will eat you. Manatelugu lokasamathundega, manamu tayar chesina raksha shudhu manallai mingastadu. This is what Taliban is a classic example of. Because Taliban is a creation of America, Saudi and Pakistan together, no reason. If this should not happen, he should retaliate to this. Yes, sir? No, some, some people would have seen few views where the army officers, senior army officers, they attended the funeral of terrorist head. Few family members, Masooda's family members were killed, around ten to twelve of them. Now, listen to this. The army officers of Pakistan attended this funeral ceremony. The question is again, why? The question is only reiterating that I am with you. Why? Because if you are aware, these thirty thousand terrorists were not there in the training camps when we targeted them on the seventh of May. They were already evacuated to Afghanistan border. They were already evacuated to the Afghanistan border. And India knows, India will not attack along the Afghanistan border. They shifted the F sixteen of America also to Afghanistan border. They shifted these terrorists also to the Afghanistan border. Now, when the so-called war is going on, what are these terrorists doing? This is the question. What are these terrorists doing now? What they will be doing in future? Anybody? It's anybody's thought. Are they going to sit idle? No, because the army is going to fight a war, though the land war has not started. The land war has not started, but the army is going to fight a war someday. Now, it is only aerial war that is happening, they are using drones, I am using S four hundred and my aircrafts and missiles and other things. That is also not a right thing, we will talk about it, give me some time. Now, these thirty thousand guys are again waiting for an order. They are again waiting for an order. And what is the order? When and from where to enter India? When and from where to enter India? Now, listen to this carefully. Earlier, these terrorists used to come in ones and tens only. Okal idharu, idharu muguru, muguru naliguru, teen char panch lo, asa aate the. Now, once they get orders, now go. They will come in hundreds, they will come in thousands. You saw, when six people came, they killed twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, some people. They would have killed hundred also. They had weapons with them, they had ammunition with them. We were little lucky that they did not kill beyond this. They used twenty twenty bullets to kill each person, which was not needed. It is only showing that anger, ideological unrest that is there inside, keeping that aside. If they also use the same strategy, hey, bully, hey, dishman, and if one thousand people come carrying one thousand AK forty sevens, each person carrying sixty to eighty rounds, what they can do? It means it can have havoc in my country. So, this calls for a very strong cross-border domination. I spoke about area domination, you remember in the class, I used the word area domination. So, the BASF which is deployed along the IB and the Indian army which is deployed along the LOC, they have to ensure perfect area domination. And if this area domination is not maintained, if the infiltrators sneak in in hundreds and thousands, entire villages can be wiped out. Entire villages can be wiped out. So, this threat continues to loom large on our country. Now, listen to this carefully. When everything is peaceful along the border, when an, what the enemy generally does is, understand how infiltration happens, how infiltration happens. You heard about this word launchpads? You would have heard about this word launchpads, right? So, assume this is the IB, this is the international boundary, this is Pakistan and this is India. This is the international boundary. They want to infiltrate six terrorists, the same terrorists who came to Pahalgam and carried out the cowardly act, we will assume that. We will understand, they have identified this stretch of border which they feel is weakly guarded for some reasons. Which they feel it is either weakly guarded or it is easier to sneak in from here. What they will do? They will carry out bombardment elsewhere. They will carry out bombardment maybe here, maybe here, maybe here, maybe here. Generally, the mindset says is, and we know, the BASF is deployed all along the border in B O P position, border outpost, we call it, yes or no? Now, listen to this carefully. Now, what happens generally? I am not talking this time, peace time me generally infiltration kaisa hota. The moment shelling or bombardment starts here, here and here, assuming there was a B O P here also. He will call him, brother, I am under attack. What he will do? Okay, I am sending some reinforcement. He will tell, brother, I am also under attack. He will say, okay, I am sending some to you. He says, sir, I am also under attack. Okay, he, so what he will do is, keeping only bare minimum, he will try to divide the available manpower with the B O Ps which are under attack. Already weakly guarded, now what has happened? Furthermore, dilution happened, it becomes very easy for them to sneak in from these gaps. So, this is how, what this is they are doing is called as covering fire. It is called as covering fire. Means they are covering the movement of terrorists who are coming into India, infiltrating into India. Now, listen, war scenario is there, full-fledged war is there. In a full-fledged war, there is a fence along the border, there is a fence along the border. What the enemy artillery and the enemy aircraft will do is, they will destroy the fence with bombardment. Imagine this fence of one by one kilometer has been broken. Now, what will happen? Like this, all along the border, twenty places, fifty places, the fence has been broken. And it becomes easier in the hours of darkness to send people in large numbers. So, in the battlefield, it becomes all the more easier to infiltrate than a regular time scenario. So, this is the real threat. This is the real threat when the terrorists can come in hundreds and in thousands. So, this is where area domination, patrolling becomes very, very important if you have to maintain sanity along the border. So, this is a very big threat, how these thirty thousand soldiers or terrorists, sorry, I should not use the word soldiers, thirty thousand terrorists can sneak into India. Now, listen to this carefully. Terrorist is not trained in conventional warfare. It means he is not that much trained to fire back at a soldier who is firing at him. But he is trained to kill a civilian. See, if, if I am a terrorist, to kill her, I will not even blink my eye. I will take out my weapon and shoot at her. These thoughts that she is a young girl, may not be married, she would have had a future, preparing for UPSC, am I doing right thing, why should I call an innocent? Nothing of this thought is there in my mind. My brain has been, what you call brainwash to that extent, I only think is, I have to kill her. The after effects, the innocence has no value in my processing of my mind. In fact, if you remember, Kasab Yol, Kasab Yol. You all know Kasab? Kasab Yol. Anybody who has not heard this name? Good, good, India is great, shavish. Others know who is Kasab, right? How many of you know who catched Kasab? Naam bol. Nataram goat se. Tukaram? It means we did marketing of Kasab very well, we did not do marketing of a constable who caught a terrorist alive without any weapon with him. It's a big failure. It means in the information warfare, you failed as a country. If the youth who is preparing to be the leaders of tomorrow do not know who caught the Kasab, how a common man you can expect to know? Why you did not do marketing of this guy to the world? Telling, look, my untrained, means not so. See, Kasab is in his early twenties, took training as a hardcore militant, holding an AK forty seven. My Tukaram Kamla is in his late forties and early fifties, about to retire maybe, holding one latte, a bit constable, catching hold of a weapon when he is firing at his stomach. The barrel goes hot, you cannot hold it, hold it, chot touch nikaarshakyo. And in that act of daredevil, he caught Kasab alive, a terrorist caught alive and you did not market it. How mindless of you and you should, you know Malala Yousafzai? Who is Malala? The Afghanistan poster girl? They also marketed her and he was a country friend. It means our information warfare is only enemy centric. There was a golden opportunity to create a hero out of him and you missed it. So, this is where in information warfare, we are weak, they are strong. We are weak and they are strong. I have a question to you and to the government also. Nineteen ninety four, Masooda was caught in one operation of the army. Masooda was caught in nineteen ninety four, Malana Masooda. In nineteen ninety nine, they carry out a plane hijack of IC eight one four and demand his release for releasing the aircraft. My question is, what was the need to keep him alive for five years? In the army, we are given a training, he has come to die, please fulfill his wish. Pindul, and where the bullet can go, you don't have to go. In our, in our drills, in the army In our, in our drills, in the army basic training and in the training of the anti-terrorist operations in J and K, it is very clear. I know he there in the house, I don't have to enter the house, blast the house. Let him go to hell because he has come to go to hell. And when that has happened, chalo for some reasons you caught him, what was the need to? A classic example, in Russia, there was a massacre called Beslan Massacre. Some Chechenian terrorist took hostage of one school, some eight, nine hundred children. They said, if you don't do this, we will kill the children. The Russians said, go ahead, I don't care. One thousand children are koi parane mar do ja. It means they are like, you cannot shake my country. And not only that they saved the children, but few of them died, one eighty or one sixty children died. But Russia said, Tike, if it is the cost to save my country, I have to give the sacrifice of hundred children to one children, I am okay with it. So, it means there is a collective consciousness of the country, how a terrorist has to be treated. And we lost that consciousness in IC eight one four and he created Jashay Muhammad after he was released. Release bhi kar diya chalo achi baate. Who stopped you from injecting something in him that bastard dies after one day? Why you have to be too good? Be a good people with people who are good. You have to be crooked with people who are crooked. Ane ye bhi samjhana padega kya? So, there is no need to treat a donkey like a king, no? You have to treat a donkey like a? Donkey only, that's the problem with our country. We are too good. And Pakistan is a rogue state. Imagine one good chap and one bad chap. The bad chap will continue to beat the good chap. Good chap says, udra udra, thi tapura tapura. Or you will go to a punch. So, this is where you need to understand, but see, you cannot behave like a rogue for sure. But will anybody question you once he dies after one day? Will anybody question you? Aa India kuna isakaisa injection de diya, toh ki joga? Well, that's where you need to understand. Learn the campaign of Israel that happened in Lebanon, no, sorry, Libya. The kind of operation they carried out, are beautiful campaigns they have done. That's why in one of the interviews, I said, maybe India is going to be the Israel of the east in future. You touch my country, I will kill you. You look at my country, I will take out your eyeballs. Because if you do not posture yourself as an aggressive country, people will continue to pester you. So, this is where you need to understand how this is going to open up. Some, some interview panel member was asking me, sir, what if Pakistan uses nuclear weapon on me? I laughed for five minutes first. Then, what if Pakistan uses nuclear weapon on me? Now listen to this carefully. My Gujarat is here. My Arunachal is here. What is the width of my country? My J and K is here. My Kanyakumar is here. What is the length of my country? And what is the width of your country and length of your country? And when you say I will use a nuclear weapon, assuming you will launch it on Hyderabad. We invite you to do it. We are volunteers. Hyderabad, Great Reference, Ashok Nagar, Pasivul Ekramasagat. Tike? When the Obergeister class is going on, you have open invitation, do it. Now listen to this carefully. If this is targeted nuclear, I am trying to tell you how the nuclear bluff of Pakistan is unreal. Nuclear bluff of Pakistan is unreal. Ya main aapko samjhana chahe. Nineteen ninety nine, we fought Kargil War. That time also Pakistan was nuclear. That time also Pakistan was nuclear. Three mayna ya ladai chala. Three months we fought. Did he use nuclear weapon? Did he won the war? He lost the war. And two thousand twenty five, nothing has changed. Twenty twenty five, nothing has changed, no matter what, he cannot use nuclear weapon. There are two, three reasons for it. Because nuclear warhead is not, there is something called as mating. In the nuclear warhead, the projectile and the nuclear warhead have to be mated with each other before you launch the weapon. Generally, the nuclear warhead is kept separately, the projectile that is supposed to carry the nuclear warhead is kept separately. And have faith in me, our spies and intelligence agencies keep a very close eye on both. Keep a very close eye on both. The moment mating happens, my intelligence agencies will tell me, sir, the mating has been confirmed. And Rajnath Singh very clearly in twenty twenty two made a statement. Though I said no first use policy and a few, but if I have an information that the mating has been confirmed, I will not allow you to use it first. For me, even the mating of the nuclear warhead and the projectile is an attack on my country. And I will use my weapon against you before even you actually do it on ground. And if I use my five nuclear weapons of strategic nature, the Barawala nuclear weapon. Five, five nuclear weapon, entire Pakistan is out of the world. Only five. I have got one seventy, one eighty, some odd number. I need only five. In fact, recently, one of the railway minister or food processing minister made a statement. I don't know whether it is a railway. Hamne dhai dhai ke paav paav ke aise nahi bana rakhaye. Two and a half KG, one point two five KGs. And I have strategic nuclear weapons. Two KG you say, okay, one kilometer by one kilometer nuclear. I, in my nuclear policy, I have written few things very clear. Whether you use tactical weapon, whether you use operational weapon, whether you use strategic weapon, nuclear weapon against me. My response would be only a big weapon. And I have a promise that I will ensure complete. My retaliation would be to completely destroy you. And we use a word called unacceptable damage. Unacceptable damage on your country. That's what ninety nine Atalgarri was, I said. If you use nuclear weapon against me, today's sunset will be the last sunset of your life. Pakistan ka, tomorrow morning, Pakistan will not wake up for seeing the sunrise. And he told, the potential of these weapons is such that coming seven hundred years, not even a blade of grass will grow on Pakistan. And nobody can enter that area because of the nuclear radiation for next seven hundred years. So, this is what Pakistan also knows. So, the nuclear bluff of Pakistan ka, it is actually a nuclear bluff. If you have observed it carefully, till today, no Pakistani army person has ever spoken about nuclear weapon. They always use the railway minister, the agriculture minister, the information broadcasting minister for this. There is a minister for Kashmir also. They have a minister for Kashmir affairs and information broadcasting. Even that fellow never used this bluff. Utna kyun? Three salsa Russia, Ukraine ladai chal raha. Russia has the world's largest stockpile of nuclear weapons. Did Russia use it? Means nuclear weapon is basically a deterrent mechanism. Is basically a deterrent tool. It is not a conventional tool in a warfare scenario. So, we don't have to fear that Pakistan will use nuclear weapon against India. One more beautiful analogy I will give you. If Pakistan fires a nuclear weapon, assuming that this is Pakistan territory and this is that launchpad site. From where they are planning to launch this nuclear weapon and this is India. This is India. My S four hundred missile defense system, it has few radars. Some are called interceptor radars, some are called guidance radars. There are many things in that, we will not go into the technicalities. The radar will track the flight path of this based on, in what angle the projectile started. What is the speed, what is the weight, it can calculate where it is going to hit on my country. This is the calculation the radar does. Immediately, it will send a signal to something known as the command post to tell them that a missile has been fired. And it is going to approximately hit this particular place. In this particular time, the command post will activate the missile and the missile will say hello brother. In the air, in the air and this will be mostly in Pakistan. In the air of Pakistan, the hello brother will do good morning Pakistan. Even if they use a nuclear weapon, ninety nine percent it will blast in. And Pakistan army people know this. That's why they keep their mouth shut. That's why they keep their mouth shut. And you have seen how good is the air defense system of Pakistan till today? Useless. Because China says, sasta maal karida. As a country, before buying a mobile phone also, we tell the shopkeeper, China wala madhikana. And this fellow buying weaponry from China, he wants to attack India. It a murk khuda lete pothe, in kevay na na nakti li. See, understand few things. Somebody was telling. Sir, army strength. Somebody was telling, army strength comparison. Somebody used the word army strength comparison. And very beautifully that reporter, you know what he said? Sir, P O K me jitne ho sakto terrorist hi hai. I said, I will buy your argument. For the sake of debate, I will buy your argument. Six lakhs is the army strength. Thirty thousand are their butterflies. Yes or no? Thirty thousand butterflies, six lakhs. So-called self-declared soldiers, they are not. And say ten lakh supporters in the. Okay, others, just number. I am talking from history perspective. I am not making any, just rough statement main aai bol ra. Tike? When the intense battle will begin. When the intense battle begins. Intense battle, conventional one-to-one Bennett battle, we call it. Out of the six lakhs. In the first two to three days. If my estimation is right, anywhere between twenty to twenty-five percent will flee the battlefield. Run away. Atyar atyar sab chodega aur majid ki taraf baalgiya. Ye hoga. History mein huwa hai. Pakistan, east Pakistan mein, this is what has happened. See, the courage of the soldier to fight a battle is not an individual bravado courage. No. It is a courage that is derived from the support of his country. If a soldier knows that my country is standing with me behind, my family will be taken care of. I will get all the honors that I deserve as a soldier. If I get martyred, he will give two thousand percent of his capacity. And that is what is a Indian soldier is about because he has faith and courage in the political functioning of this country. The Pakistani soldier does not have that courage because he knows my country will not support. And classic example is the Kargil War. In Kargil War, many Pakistani soldiers who were killed in the Kargil War, they denied to take back their dead bodies also. A soldier who fought for you, for you, he is a soldier at least, may not be for me. But for you, he was a soldier. He fought for your country, right or wrong, whatever it is, at least you should take back his dead body. They denied to take the dead body of this soldier. We thirteen Jaipur, in Kargil War, thirteen Jaipur, under the supervision of their commanding officer. We buried them in Indian soil, their, 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 what we call them. Their samadhi is there in Kargil even today. We did not destroy or disturb that samadhi also till today. That is the respect we give to a soldier. Whether mine or anybody country's soldier. Why that for twenty nineteen, before the Balakot, we carried out one anti-terror operation. Before the Pathan Court attack. We killed five terrorists. We killed five terrorists. Their body was lying on the L O C. They did not take the body, animals ate them. Animals ate them. I am not exaggerating to gain your sympathy or something, in reality. Now tell me, will he fight with the same courage and commitment as my soldier will fight? Because you have given a wrong example to him. And as the war progresses beyond ten days, believe you me, sixty to seventy percent of them will run away. Will run away. This has happened in the past, this is going to happen in future also. I will tell you one more beautiful story. You remember Bangladesh liberation? Nineteen seventy one, the Bangladesh Liberation War. We fought this war for thirteen days. Within thirteen days, Bangladesh got liberated. And we took ninety-three thousand people as prisoners of war, POWs. Tike? Listen to this carefully. Merko gusa, kavi kavi, apne desh ke upar bhi aata hai. Unki hum itne aache, kyun hai? There is a reason because we are a civilization of five thousand years. We have learnt value system from our generations, 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 generations. It has come to us as genetic blessing, which has not happened to them for some reasons. Tike? Now listen to this. For three years, we gave them free food, clothing, shelter. We gave them food, clothing and shelter. For how many years? Three years. And after that, they were repatriated to Pakistan. Repatriated, sent back to Pakistan. There is a rule in the armed forces. Once you have been taken as a prisoner of war, you are not reinstated back into the army. They are not taken back into the army because there is a possibility that they would have done your brainwash and you may work as a spy for them. Possibility rehta hai. It is an international practice that a POW is never taken back into the battlefield. We generally don't have this practice. If you remember Avinandan Vardhaman, Dhotindan, he was the guest of Pakistan. He was returned after two, three days, he is still flying the aircrafts. Tike? This time request to him not to fall there. This time request to him not to fall there. If you want to fall, fall this side. Don't fall there. Because of him, a war got cancelled the last time. So this time he should not fall there. If he wants to fall, fall this side only. Okay? Now listen. Three years after when we sent them. The Pakistan army thought, inka kya kare? You cannot kill them. A lot of human rights, human cry rojaoga. You cannot leave them. We have to do something with them. Then one entity, so-called intelligent entity of Pakistan. Inter-service intelligence, it came up with an idea. It gave an idea. Ek kam karte hain sir. Pele to ek saal inka indoctrination karte hain. We will tell them, see how you were humiliated for three years. First day, he is like, pura foot-waited ra. Humiliated and to know. Or moos haal se foot-waited. First day, the indoctrination started. Tenth day, one month, two month, three months, six months, nine months, one year. We are humans, no? Hum kaan ke kache hoti hai. What we hear, we believe more than what we see. We are humans. We at times don't believe what we see also. Because we know we are fools, we cannot interpret things correctly. So we believe more what we hear than what we believe what we see. Over one year of indoctrination, this ninety-three thousand guys were now ready for something. They ready is to take revenge from India. What they are ready for? To take revenge from India. How beautifully they took revenge, you know? What ISI told? You establish school of Islamic teaching, mother's. All along the LOC and P O K. And you indoctrinate the next generation. What started in seventy-three, seventy-four. It took around fourteen to fifteen years' time to supply the first lot of terrorists who will come to India from these schools. Jo che saath saal ki umar mein aaya hua. Usko bish saal ka hone ke liye barat thera saal lage. And these ninety-three thousand people who were indoctrinated that you were ridiculed by India. You were misbehaved by India. They indoctrinated the next generation and a big band of terrorists were born. Who were to go to India to carry out strikes as and when directed by the Pakistan army and ISI. So see how somebody masterminded so much behind you and you as a good Samaritan left ninety-three thousand people. That's why there is an old saying, everything is fair in love and war. And when love becomes war, God save you. Okay? Understand? So this is how, please do not have superficial understanding of what is happening. Have an in-depth ideological understanding of what is happening. Now listen to this. One more story. Somebody in YouTube saying, sir, you are mentally prepared. M S V, some name, some, some name. I am physically also prepared. Only mentally prepared, okay? I told my mama that I am going to be border. He told Kaliragurta. And that's how the mindset, parental mindset. You remember the drill happened on seventh of May? All people got onto the road and civil defense drill happened. She called me furiously, where are you? I'm like, I'm an institute. She is like, naampali dhar baam pele nenu vekadu na. Naampali lo te lena maan. Right? Then I told Shina, vechchodra naampali baam pele nenu mamboon jaisin nante. Sir, civil defense drill, sir. See how information gets misread? I am sure there are thousands and lakhs and crores like mine. Because what happens is, when fear takes over your mind. You will see what you are fearing, you will not see and hear what is actually real. That's how subconsciously the figure takes over, the fear takes over the processing of your mind correctly. And she is shouting, shouting, shouting. Mama, that is a drill which is up. I don't know anything, you come back home. Then I had to go. I have to tell her, mama, this is what is happening. You don't have to worry. Appude khale magali TV lo air siren megi. Choru ani chotla jarut min rehman ammaata vi na. In this age also, you want me to take attention. And I did one beautiful thing. My network connection, no? My flat is on third floor. That box is on the second floor. I took the back door of the house. She asked me, why are you going from this side? I said, mama, monderunche odi, I am going to go. So while going, I cut the wire and I came out of the house. For four days, no internet in my house. So I will have to play information warfare, right? So as a soldier, I know how to control the information that is from. One thing I forgot, she has a phone also. The iPad only is connected to the internet, but she has a phone, she has a TV. So she is my mother at the end of the day. So she got information from wherever she wanted. And the guy who came to repair, he told a statement in front of my mama. Auntie, it looks somebody cut the wire. And my mama looked at me. Naaki paavum teledu. Naai goosin vey isimtao. See, that's how information warfare has to be controlled. Now listen to one more angle of the war. Listen to this carefully, understand. See, we are laughing, but yes, the border is very, very tense. Though we are laughing, sitting here, the border is tense. Some of the students are messaging me and asking, sir, will the exams postpone? In the present context, it appears to me that the possibility is high. Because four states, like including Haryana, five states are almost in a state of war. In this scenario, it is not prudent to conduct the examination. So going by the past experience, we can make a safe assumption that it may largely get to postpone. But I suggest in this time, the students do not get instructions from UPSC itself in writing. Do not stop your preparation. But one more thing I would like to warn you. We have hundreds of references in the past. Whenever for any reason examination got postponed, the paper came very, very dirty. For ready reference in the near past is twenty-twenty-one paper. Twenty-twenty-one paper ko kholke ek baar dekho. CSAT also, GS also. You will understand why I made this statement. So I would also pray that the exam should not be postponed. If it gets postponed, the passing of prelims will become a big question mark. Notwithstanding that, because five states are badly affected, the chances are very, very high that it may get postponed. Come back to drones. Now, you might be watching the news and everything. We all see that our beloved friend is using drones. See. Understand the nature of the state of Pakistan. A rogue state, a failed state. Why I am making the statement? If you have seen yesterday, day before. What we call it? India's prime minister, when he calls for a meeting. All the three chiefs come. The NSA comes, the home minister comes, the defense minister comes. The chief of defense staff comes, minister of external affairs comes, others also come. We don't know where the Pakistan prime minister is today. We don't know where that bastard Asif Munnir is there. Yes or no? It means there is a complete absence of hierarchy in Pakistan. It means it is in a chaotic state. That's why I say they are a rogue state and they are a failed state. Because the political hierarchy and also in Pakistan. There is a tussle between political hierarchy and the army. Army and the ISI. Political hierarchy and the ISI. So there is always a power tussle between these three entities. If political hierarchy tells something to the army, he will not listen. Army telling something to the ISI, he said, naadi nujartino, na samanamle. When ISI tells something to political hierarchy, he says, talk to the army, not to me. So there is no cohesion as such between these three wings of the state functionaries. In this, what happens is, even if you want to initiate dialogue, you don't know with whom to talk. If you talk to political, the army will carry out an attack. If you talk to army, the ISI will carry out an attack. Because few terrorist organizations are under the control of ISI. To name one, Tarik Taliban Pakistan, P T P. It is under, in a way, control of the ISI of Pakistan. So these people are, even if you have to initiate talks. My question is, whom to talk? Where is the number given me I talk? Whom to talk? To Asif Munnir, to the C M, to the P M, to the defense minister, to the ISI chief? Whom to talk? So there is nobody to talk to. Now listen to this carefully. When there is nobody to talk to, dialogue is not a way out. Dialogue is not a way out. Now, the drones that are being used are the drones that have been provided by Turkey. Now, does this mean Turkey is also on war with India? The answer is no. Why? Because it is a pure purchase and sale relationship. He sold, he purchased. Now you can say, sir, they are training the Pakistanis in how to fly these drones. In sale and purchase, generally the training is also involved as part of sale and purchase. Because when we would have bought Rafel from France. Kishini to bataya, ganak darwada isak khola hai. Ye button ka matlab ye hai and all. So training is generally part of the defense procurement purchase, right? So just because Turkey is training Pakistan in the use of drones does not make Turkey also as if it is war on war with India. Yes, you can make a statement, Turkey is a sympathizer of Pakistan. Okay, I will agree. Why? Because Turkey claims to be the present-day withholder of the Ottoman Empire khansech. So because Ottoman Empire was majorly an Islamic, what we call foothold of territories across Europe and Asia. He wants the support of Islamic countries in his holding that position. And you know, Indonesia happens to be the world's largest Islamic country, followed by this guy. Approximately seventeen percent of Muslims of the world stay in Indonesia. If I am right, eleven point one percent are in Pakistan. Very closely followed by ten point nine percent are there in India. This is an old, little old observation. I am sure we would have crossed him. Because we have become the second largest, oh sorry, the most populous country in the world. So I would definitely presume there would have been some impact in these figures also. But because this is an old, nothing official has come out new. We will take home that we are the third largest Islamic country in the world. Islamic country means the person believing in the system stay in this country. Okay? Now, if this is the position, Turkey also understands that if I directly support him, I will lose eleven percent audience. So Turkey is also mindful of this fact that I should limit my support to Pakistan only up to a point. Because if I cross that line, I will lose this eleven percent or maybe present to twelve percent audience. So Turkey will definitely sell weapons. Turkey will definitely train him, but that does not make him anti-India or on war with India as such. We'll see his another brother, born to another mother. Many a times Pakistan has told, my relationship with China is sweeter than honey. Deeper than ocean, stronger than steel. Ye main nahi bol rao. Pakistan ne bol hai. These were the words Pakistan used, I am not using it out of my own imagination. Pakistan defined its relationship with China as sweeter than honey. Deeper than ocean and stronger than steel. Assuming that is reality. For some seconds, we'll assume that is real. Now the question is, why this idiot did not sell him first-grade weapons? He sold him probably third, probably fourth, probably fifth, most probably defunct weapons to Pakistan. Okay? He knows, he has a habit of going and sitting in the lap of America. Mummy bhuk lagi hai. Yes or? Pakistan has this habit of going and sitting in the lap of America. Mama feeling hungry. He knows, if I give him first-grade weapon, he will give that weapon to America. America will do reverse engineering and create a counter weapon against me if at all I have to fight a battle with him. He wants him to believe what he is having is first-grade weapon. That is the reason why the air defense system of Pakistan, which is primarily purchased from China, failed to intercept even one missile also. We pounded twenty-four missiles on the night of seventh May. On the, on the terrorist training camps, not even one missile was intercepted by Pakistan. When asked by the media reporters, their Pakistan defense minister replied. If I intercept, the location of my radars would be known to India. I said, keep up, the good spirit. You are fit to become the defense minister of the country. If it was in my hands, I would have made you the prime minister of Pakistan. Logon ko beko banane ke alawa, in logon ne kuchh bhi nahin kia hai. Okay? Understand this? Understand? But the drone technology that Pakistan is using is majorly Turkey. The money to buy those could have been given by Pakistan and the weapon delivery would have been done to Pakistan by Turkey. We cannot negate the role of Tehran or Iran, whatever you call it. Iran could also be a supplier of drones to Pakistan. So he is using these drones. Now listen to this statement carefully. Another five, seven minutes, then I will close. My mobile number has become customer care number to the TV reporters. They only wake me up in the morning, I have stopped putting alarm. Exactly five o'clock, five fifteen, they start. Sir, good morning, sir, lechara. Ochchin nu pallu dronistava jethu. Hey. One thirty in the night, they will call. Sir, Pakistan attacked, we are sleeping. Sir, Pakistan attacked, we are sleeping, as if I am in the border. Par wali navi le si, pasan se lai peindra, ante, sar okhko video ki live kosta ra. My amma told, "Dare not you do zoom from here." I feel as if the missile is going on my house. So, I said, "Sorry, bro." Anything in the institute only, nothing in that home. Okay? My amma is a peace lover. She is not a... Now, listen to this carefully. Amma. IMF kuda? Istan na na. Ilandar todva naram. IMF says, see, IMF decisions are taken by America. There is a reason why I hate America. Directly na na, indirectly. Yindu ka indirectly, yindu baipadam. Come again. How is it different? Do you think IMF will give aid? Ante, interest lekunda double isthadi ni IMF istundian ankhutna vandhu. Bailout package, okay? Last year, they had applied for seven billion dollars bailout package, no? Like bank, when you go to bank, when you say, "I want to construct the house." Depending on the progress of the construction, they will continue to release the funds. They will not give you entire money day one. Tu taaya render bote? So, that's how they will give funds in packages, bailout packages, okay? Now, come back. He is using a drone against me and I am using S four hundred. The question is, how far this is correct? Because it is a very costly equipment, which I have purchased paying thousands of crores of rupees and few billion dollars. There is an estimate because these figures are not released openly. There is an estimate, we got five units of this S four hundred. Around thirty-five thousand to forty-two thousand crores is what we have spent in purchase of this missile defence system from Russia in two thousand and eighty. Now, iska jo shaurupe ka drone hai, uske liye kya main karod rupe ka missile varbat karun, is the question. Big question. Pitchka mehda brahmashtram lanti. It is already a pitchball, drone. Israel has trained its birds to counter drone. I am not exaggerating. Israel has a flock of birds in hundreds and thousands. It has trained them to go and attack a drone. And what am I doing? Playing video again? Tavarn na na. My argue, he, he, see, listen, listen, listen. When emotions take over your head, everything seems right. When you love somebody so deeply, everything becomes black in front of your eyes. You can't see the truth. Okay? It happens. It happened to your sir also. It happens to everybody else. Now, listen to this. Only once it happened, after that I used a control button. After that, so far it hasn't happened. Now, listen. I say, instead of using S four hundred, why am I not using what the world is doing like jamming, like kinetic interceptors or for that matter, something called as directed energy system. Directed energy systems. Directed energy system. Directed energy systems. What they will do, I will explain in five minutes and I will take questions for five minutes, then we will close. What this jamming does is, say for example, this is a drone in the air. There would be somebody who will controlling it. Obviously, the drone also has to be controlled. The jamming disturbs the communication network between the drone and the controller. So, the communication would be lost and the drone does not know what to do. This is called jamming. There is something called as directed energy systems. What it does is, a particular band of frequency is sent to this particular drone in high intensity. It will disturb the electronics of this drone. And because of this, even though the communication is being sent, the drone does not behave the way it is supposed to. He is telling, "Go to India, it is coming to Peshawar." So, he is telling something, the drone is doing something else, okay? Now, in the kinetic interceptors, what they generally do is, they will fly either one more drone and from that drone, they will fire something known as a wire mesh or something. This wire mesh goes and entangles the drone and the drone falls where it is. I told you, training of birds, these birds also go hit the drone. There are few blades and cutters put on the feet of the bird. It will try to destroy the drone and the drone falls on the ground. So, these are few things that the world is practicing. My question is, when my intelligence told me that this fellow is giving so many drones, this fellow is sponsoring the purchase of drones, why we did not work on developing this technology? Is my question to everybody. This is how you need to read the situation. If, if I have to go a step further, if somebody crossed the border, stayed in India for two, three days, carried out a terrorist attack on a place of choice and a time of choice, accept it, it is an intelligence failure. Accept it, it is an intelligence failure. So, these things also, one needs to keep in mind when we create counter strategies, no? Our intelligence, our retaliation is good. Agreed, thumbs up. Though I have used S four hundred, still a thumbs up, no problem. But my question is, where are they even today? It means still my intelligence is unable to catch the perpetrators. Still my intelligence is unable to catch the perpetrators. I told you, I will talk one more last point for five minutes, then we will close. Is it phase one? What happened, Operation Sindur? Is it phase one? I mean, more attacks of this nature can we expect? Answer is yes. The answer is yes. Understand what is the objective of Operation Sindur? What is the objective? The objective was not to strike those nine targets, no. Prime Minister very clearly told, this operation will not end. Till such time, the last terrorist sponsored by Pakistan is either handed over to India or killed in action. I will not stop this operation. Now, I carried out strike on nine targets on the seventh of May. What these people did is, I am sure, once Pahalgam happened, the minimum that Pakistan could guess is India going to attack the terror training camps. After having the experience of Balakot in two thousand nineteen, where we did a surgical strike, the least that Pakistan was expecting was a retaliation from India, most likely targeted at this training camps, most likely. Now, will Pakistan keep quiet? No. What it will do? It will take out all the terrorists from here and it will take them to something known as safe heavens. I am just trying to tell you to think how the war may escalate or continue to happen. In future, because I told you, my objective is to end terrorism, I have to go behind them. And wherever they are, six hundred kilometers deep, five hundred kilometers deep, thousand kilometers deep, I will strike at them. There is a very open intelligence where Masood other lives. It is there in open media, where he lives. We need to muster courage to target that place. Even if it ends up killing civilians, if the war escalates, India should not think twice before exercising that option. There is also a strong input that Daud Ibrahim also stays there. Use this opportunity to eliminate him also. And trust me, it is going to happen. Because now, the political will has come to take care of them once and for all. So, that is how, it is only a phase one. This war on terror may go for five years, ten years, if required, twenty years also. So, it is not going to end soon, but very important question, for what? And for what ka answer hai? For what your preamble promises? What your preamble promises? I tell in the classroom, any action of the government, you will have a direct link with the preamble of the constitution. You can measure, link, any step of the government with the preamble, okay? Because your preamble promises you justice. Whether one person's death, ten people's death or anybody people's death. One suggestion, through all of you, to all of you who are listening online also, that girl who Himanshi Naraval, a lot of people are trolling her. What, one of the ladies who lost her husband in this twenty-five, twenty-six people, from where she is, I am not so aware. She is a wife of an ex-military officer who was killed in this Pahalgam incident, got married just a week before. And they went to Kashmir to spend some time and this unfaithful incident happened in Kashmir. While talking to a media, she said, "Please don't kill the civilians for seeking justice." She said out of her idea of understanding things that justice is not when you discriminately or indiscriminately kill anybody. So, she said, "My request to the government and to the people at large is, don't allow this to unfold as a communal riot situation in the country or something." With that positive intent, she said, and people started trolling her. Thum gaddar ho, thum dar gaya ho, all that nonsense started. So, my suggestion to all of you and to the students or public who are listening online, please do not get into trolling. Because this is what the enemy wants. He wants to divide the country on communal lands. Let them not feel that they succeeded in this. Let all be united in these hours of testing time and create a world where we all live peacefully. We live peacefully, we live harmoniously and where we care for each other. See, war does not give peace, believe. Neither to the person who is fighting on the ground, neither to the country at large. War cannot give peace. War does not have the capacity to give peace. Only humanness has the capacity to give peace. But when the situation so demands, war becomes inevitable. Then as a nation, we have no choice but to go for war, okay? That is why our Prime Minister and our leadership is repeatedly saying, "We do not have an intention to go to a full-scale war." But if you force me, if you push me to a corner, I will surely go, okay? So, with this, we will stop this session here. If anybody has... Sir, don't you think that this park of Pahalgam attack is due to shifting of industries from China to India? Cannot be ruled out completely, but there is a possibility. He has a point to make. Maripi Jayant, apna hero. Okay? He says, because now that the Chinese industry are shifting from America and elsewhere in the Europe to India, maybe America wants to disturb India's growth. Because very recently, China called for a relationship of dance between elephant and a dragon. Yes or no? Could be a possibility, cannot be ruled out completely, okay? Yeah. Any other questions? Insightful session, thank you, sir. Will China join if we retake our POK? Will China join and is it join in this sense, you mean to say join Pakistan? If at all we go for taking our POK, I am sure it will be, at least for the time being, taking China into confidence ki bhaav. Don't worry, we will not ask you to give back the Shakskam Gali, at least immediately. But definitely, it is a matter of right which we can ask. So, that is there, but we need to for the time being take them into confidence that will not disturb your CPEC, the China-Pakistan Economic Corridor and the Shakskam Gali. Again, I am making a statement for the time being. Once things are settled, POK becomes ours, maybe later again say, "Nadhanu, gichay." It depends how we unfold it, okay? Yeah. Anyone else? Somebody is asking something? Hundred percent, hundred percent we will go, we will take back. I will take you to POK, okay? We will all take a good picture there, standing in POK. POK cross karke India volu likhenge, we will take a picture, okay? Shrinath Rashikam. Enti parisithe, twelve o'clock was the session, no? Na chette, dan button, inflows chesta. Na na, koncha slow na na. Na processing speed ni anta kadu. Ah, check. Or, nenu phone silent ke petti, ansipayen, okka nimsha. Seela miss kalsure. Huh? I wish to go to Pakistan. So, bon call will not come at least. Ah, cheba ma. Yavarn, andar yavarma? Yavarn, yavarn diskalta? Indian army valu, civilians ni kapadanki bunkers lo diskalta. Population chaale ekku na na, bunker chaal takkuwa. Bunkers lo ma, ite muththam bunkers ani galpi, okhko parival mani murka tadankle. Don't imagine bunker is a city or something. It is small pit hole under the ground. Your imagination is like Baugali bunker, right? It is not so. Check, what's class here? Sleeper cell identification is not that easy. As I have taught to some of you in the class also, sleeper cells maintain very high degree of secrecy of their real purpose. You do not know, maybe some sleeper cell guy sitting in the class. Could be, could be, atla. So, it is very much difficult to identify what is a sleeper cell, how it is operating. Enana? Cheychu, that internal disturbance, that's why General VK Singh rose our first CDS. He used to talk about two point five pronged war. He used to talk about two-point-five-pronged war. One way Pakistan, one way China, and the third is internal two-point-five-pronged war he used to talk. Till now, hundred percent. Till now, hundred percent, till now, at least hundred percent. Backstab ante enti, adi sadan va panjey kunda aapestar, at la. Historically, Russia has been a true friend to India, historically. In the present context, you are purchasing so much of oil from Russia against the will and wish of America. So, it means you are cementing your ties with Russia. If I am put in, I will never do that. Obviously, no, my trade partner is under trouble. Biggest trade partner is under trouble. Why will I stop or do such things? That's what I said. America is an untrustworthy friend, Russia is an all-weather friend. Just because you are girlfriend, esko neel peenandukku, we need to matradham mane. Yeah. See, country mottham okadishan onna lekpe, na army keta okadishan. Raat undakpoch, you are right. He has a statement. Say, future lo movi raaru anjepi, indirakpe sepran try jashtunadu. Camera venakundu, le bairan raavtlav manodki. They have maintained this continuously from nineteen forty-seven. And we expect them to maintain this for long period of time. At least in system, vala buddhey anta. So, there is a problem in Hindi, aadat badal shakti hai fitrat nahi. Abgi ni Telugu le apaluna dilhi. Alvaatli marsch ko chukani, manastattam marsch leemo anta, dada? Alaa Pakistan manastattam marsch leankile. Manastattam anta. Where ever good akash, democracy gatna, ah chepna? Could be, could be a possibility. Could be a possibility. It failed. Then why Pakistan still buying those things? Adhe vell na na, mookhulu. Var kippur gudar dhamnautle, though, India lo China mobile gura gondro. Nene, oh different system gonesi, veni namme seno. Mookhala na, mookhulu. Mookhurki, no mookhuran sepran chaala aastu. It is very difficult to tell an idiot and make him accept that he is an idiot. That's the, that's the characteristic features of Pakistan. Okay. Can you tell Pakistan you are wrong? Will he accept it? Not because he is not wrong, because he cannot accept it that he is wrong. One minister said yesterday, we are a responsible state. Ne naavtu naavtu kurichans padpe na. He said, we are a responsible state. I am like, okay, they have a different dictionary meaning of responsible. Ah, we have past, not Pakistan. We have to learn from past, yes. Pakistan lo ledna na. They don't learn from past. That's why they live in the past. See, almost both the countries were born during the same time. Where are we, where are they? One, one, some YouTube troll I was watching. One boy is interviewing a girl. He is telling India has developed so much, they have their own car industries and all. She says, we have Benz, we have Tata, we have what you call BMW and all. And he is trying to tell her, bittai, hamare ni, hamari to hai. She is telling, they are ours only, no, it is coming to us in hours only. He says, no, different companies from abroad coming and selling it in Pakistan. She says, so what? They are mine. No, mookhatraani ki, next level anmata. He is trying to tell they have Tata, they have so many other car manufacturing companies and all. But that girl is not in a position to understand what he is saying. So, the, the leadership is also like that. The leadership is also like that. Var ki anta cinema le. Because they are like, okay? If Pakistan, see, ah, very good question. What if Pakistan does not give back the money to China, to IMF? Listen to this statement what I am making. Neither America nor China will allow Pakistan to collapse as a state. They will not allow it to collapse. Why? Because China, why? Because China wants to use Pakistan as a pressure point against India. Imagine a situation, Pakistan as a country le. Ni nuclear bomb luthi, page wardes. Country poing, le, world map lo Pakistan le. Will you now not start looking at China? Yes or no? You accept it? Not because I am saying, you accept it or no? It is a threat to China. China says, let not India see me with threat. Let India see me as a friend in trade. Let him continue to see Pakistan as a threat. So, what I did, I used Pakistan as a pressure point against India. Or idhar kotkun jaavani, udik double gudi vistna, punya vistalaadu, double gudi vistunadu, you know, how to take back that money also. So, in one arrow, two birds. Pakistan also taken, India also under control, happy, happy. For America, Pakistan is gateway to Central Asia. Pakistan is a gateway to attack China also in future. So, he would not want Pakistan to fail as a state. Our position achindi ante, America will land in Pakistan. As I told you, these thirty thousand soldiers, butterflies, can attack the army of Pakistan and take over the country. If that happens, America will land on the Pakistan land. This is, this will happen. If not now, maybe hundred years or two hundred years, see, Kavina Kadu to hova, hundred percent hova. Yeah. Never. Till this time, Pakistan is there on the world map, terrorism will continue. Because terrorism is being used as a tool to divert the mind of the people from the problems in the state of Pakistan. The problems will continue, the terrorism will continue. It will continue. Even if you are killing the last man in Pakistan, if you leave him, still terrorism will continue. That is the nature. The nature of the state is such, so it will never stop. That's why it is said, no, we can choose our friends but not our neighbors. We are unlucky with respect to our neighbors in some dimensions. Okay? Yeah, yeah. Firsse bol bitta? How Pakistan is? Malay jatna na? Final, final aim of Pakistan, political leadership and the army leadership to make money, let the people die of hunger and whatever it is, their aim is, I, if you see the bungalows of the army officers, I am not even talking about Asif Munir, Asif Munir to side me rakho. Even, you know, brigadiers, colonels and major generals, they live in palatial bindings. They are owners of hundreds and thousands of acres of land in Pakistan. They have their parallel businesses running. Their families stay in London and America and all. So, they are living kingship life. Their aim is to continue to maintain that kingship life. The way you are preparing for U P S C here, people prepare in large number for army there. Because once you become an army officer, life is zingban. Din medaru, ratme ladki. Yehi orava. And there is the brutal reality of political leadership and the army leadership of Pakistan. It is an aimless state. I would have been happy if its aim was to destroy India, at least aim is there. But that aim is also not there. Their aim is to amass wealth as much as you can, let the country go to roots, they don't mind. That, they are, they are selling the country. They purchased few drones from Turkey last year. They, they mortgaged two fifty acres of land of a university to get those drones. Katora leke ghoomraa har jaga. Paisa nahi hai, India se ladna hai. Ladna hai, bus. Chiu ladna hai, nahi pata. Bus ladna hai. Somebody else is asking? Ah. Not completely, but yes, we need to accept it at some point of time. Difficult, they are a big country, no? You don't know whether some political leader is giving shelter, a bureaucrat is giving a shelter, a businessman is giving a shelter, village mukhyi is giving a shelter. Who is giving shelter, we don't know. The coordinate search is going on. But we are more busy in fighting this operation. That's why the coordinate search is taking some time to complete. It will not come in media as of now because they are busy in retaliating. But uska pakkha quarter inquiry hoga. Us area ke liye jo jimmadar hoga, uski vardi haamaan latak raiye, isne koi shaapni. Because you are responsible for it. It is a, it is a intelligence failure at the end of the day. I am not saying you are completely responsible, but you have to take the responsibility, right? Not like that, abhi kaisa na? See, understand. Listen to this carefully. You come to know of a terrorist only when he is successful in attacking. Maybe every day hundreds and thousands of attempts are being made. They are successful in thwarting, almost ninety-nine percent of them. If you punish somebody so brutally for one percent missing, oto fir agli var aayega. You will ho sakta hai. See, terrorist lives for that one day. And you are living every day to stop him from doing it. So, there is a high possibility, ke one odd sleepers will happen. Desh bhot bada yaar, the country is very big. And the diversity is so strong, so wide. Kon kiski madad, kyu kar rai, samaj naya rahe. So, in that scenario, we need to see how things unfold. But definitely, yes, responsibility fixing to ho. He may not get any punishment for it. But kahi na kahi, uske service me yeh daag rahe jayega ki, mere hi gao me, jo meri jimmadarika ilaka tha, usme hi Pahalgam ka incident hua. Okay, that way it is, chep. Okanumsha. You telling something? Not directly, but a passing reflection can be established. Because maybe this was used as a plot by the enemy to again initiate this communal unrest in our country. Cannot be ruled out completely. Answer, Munduka? Okay, sir. Sir, sir. Hmm. Yeah. Anyone else? Ama? I will answer this question. His question is, sir, fourteen lakh troops standing army we have, how many will engage in the battlefield is his question. Understand one thing. It does not happen that all fourteen lakhs will go and stand holding their hands one by one, damuntarar. It does not happen like that, okay? The battle is not fought like that. You do not have a stretch of the border also that strong, that fourteen lakh people standing like this. There is something called as rest and replenishment. Say, for example, thirteen Jatrof is put ahead. In reserve would be, say, five sick battalion. Maybe for four, five days, they will take on the enemy. They will come back, they may go it. So, this replenishment and recoup is what we call it in the armed forces. It is a continuous process in a long-run battle. Because in war, a soldier gets tired, no? So, once he is tired, fresh army coming, he will not be able to take the beating. So, that recoup and rest continues to happen between the battalions. One more thing. From his question, one more thing which I wanted to tell you is, even now, we have not taken over the forward positions. In this sense, still the border is being manned by the B S F only. We have not deployed the army. I taught party in the class, no? When the war happens, the B S F comes back, the army goes over and takes over the forward post. We have not ordered that even till date. It is a classic indication that I do not have an intention to escalate the war. This is the message that I want to give to you. So, till now, India is not in a mood to escalate into a full-fledged war. The reasons could be many. Let the government decide. We sitting here without any information access, we cannot decide that. Sir, why can't India make its own long-range surface-to-air missile? Jayant, when you will go to D R D O's head, you get it done. We have medium range now, Akash is a medium range, surface-to-air missile, twenty-five to forty kilometers, we can strike. But long range, indigenous we don't have, but we have few weapons from other countries. See, understand this. As a country, our attention was more on development and not these things, okay? We are not a, we are not an actively war state or such, like America and all. See, America is fighting battles across the world on a day-to-day basis. Hum seventy-one ke baad agar ladai hui, toh pahili ladai hogi. So, thirty and twenty-one, after fifty-four years, we are going for probably a full-fledged war. So, our efforts are not directed at the best of the aircraft production, best of the weapons production. Our mindset is not like that. Our mindset is, Budham, Sharam, Vachami, Sapka, Mali, Keek, hmm, Andaru, Baundali, Angalo, Nenundali. This is what we are more into than anybody, okay? So, that's how we are not into. Sir, a greater operation for a greater good can happen, but I don't want to do war-war here. Sir, Israel did not allow to enemy to develop nuclear weapons, but India allowed Pakistan to develop. See, we did not allow Pakistan to develop. Pakistan is a sovereign country if it wants to develop nuclear weapon. Who are we to stop it? The same question, the Pakistan also can say, why India, you want to become nuclear? So, there is no need to stop any country from becoming nuclear. At least in this time, you own yourself have a nuclear weapon, okay? And don't worry about nuclear weapon, nothing will happen to you. We are like cockroaches, nothing will happen. How is this a failure of diplomacy? See, diplomacy failure, this is a khakarna kawal, camera ke samne meere se puch rahe. Ye jab I S banega, isko main dhoomga aches. Camera ke samne, Maripi Jayant, okay? Knowledge. Ek ma, drokja bitta, wo bhi boxing kar rahe. Failure of diplomacy ki baat hori, okay? I would have taught you in the class, war is equal to failure of diplomacy. But that holds good with a country which is a responsible state. Yaah, we are dealing with a rogue state. Isko diplomacy kaha samne aaiye, Pakistan, okay? So, there is a problem, gorre kasayon ne namutdi. So, Pakistan is that animal which will listen only the language of beating. So, here diplomacy may not work as efficiently as it would work with any responsible state as such, okay? So, that's where we are struggling in diplomacy with them. Gandhian philosophy, take whatever given and later demand for more. In what context, sir, will Pakistan use nuclear weapon? Sirisha Basava, don't worry. Even if his users, it will be his last usage. Ah.